... board meeting on Tuesday, March 2nd will come to order. Gene, everything that's on the agenda will be heard tonight?
Yes.
Correct, okay. So why don't we get started with the lot release for 101 115 Sutton Pond, Sutton Hill Road?
So this is a subdivision plan that was just approved at our last meeting. However, Tom Zerico has requested to at least administratively approve a Form J lot release because of a financing closing obligation that he has on March 11th will be before our next hearing date. So Tom has provided the roadway bond established by the DPW, the Form I covenant. He's drafted, he submitted a Form J that isn't signed yet. All criteria prior to the release of any lot and all criteria required for the covenant has been submitted. The appeal period does not end to midnight on March 8th, so I wouldn't be able to sign any of these documents from March 9th. So what I would present is if you could motion to approve them at this point, I will not execute them until the appeal period is over.
Directly, my right to sign them at the appropriate time. Does anybody have any questions on this? What's the amount?
The, he's actually committed the money for the sidewalk, sidewalk bond as well. The roadway bond was only $2,500 and that was provided by Tim Willett because there's no roadway construction. It's just to cover the utility connections. He didn't do a spreadsheet, but he submitted it on a memo format. And the sidewalk contribution was 1,900. And both of those checks have been submitted.
Okay. Do we have, what do we have for Asbillys and else?
Property. Any stormwater or anything like that, or?
The, there's a site opening bond for 5,000.
Oh, 5,000, okay.
Right, in addition to the roadway bond. And again, the roadway bond is the minimum amount.
Great idea, yeah, okay.
And Lillian, I guess that, you know, every time we connect individual services to individual homes on the street, we actually rose bonds with DPW for that street work as well, just as a, you know, to clarify and make sure you understand it.
You file the site opening, it can be permitted as well.
Okay.
Yeah. So would somebody like to make a motion to approve the planner to sign the lot release form to accept the roadway bond and other related bonds?
So moved.
Okay, motion made. So anybody want to second?
Second.
Okay, motion made at second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, folks.
Onto our public hearings. The first is 2302 Turnpike Street Earthworks. I know we've been putting this off a number of times and there's a number of things. Can you give us a summary of what the key open issues were, Gene?
So at the last meeting, we spent a lot of time looking at architectural and discussing architectural plans. Those are still in the works, so part of the continuance, continuance that was filed for the last two meetings was that a new architect's been hired, they're revising those architectural drawings, they're not ready yet. However, a lot of the stormwater response has been addressed and so there's been a lot of plan changes. So tonight, the idea was really to go through site plan changes relative to stormwater comments. We just received Lisa's second review, so the response to their response late this afternoon. So I don't have that tonight. The applicant hasn't even looked at it. She received it in email today.
Okay.
So I think we can go over that, as well as Gene Willis provided some comments which you have in hard copy. Those also came in this week. The applicant has those and can address Gene's comments as well.
Okay.
Good evening, we're here on behalf of Earthworks. The applicant in connection with the site plan approval is 2302 Turnpike Street. Here with me this evening is Danny Gill and Chris Bradges from Williamson's, Bradges, Site Design Engineer. As Ms. Enright said, the open issues were in fact the architectural plans for the building and the design to tone down the building to try and make it more of an appealing view. And as again, Ms. Enright said, we are in a transition period with architects. We do have the beginnings of plans, but nothing that would be presentable to the board or even acceptable at this point. And we didn't want to have to show you something and then come back again with another change. We anticipate having all of the architectural plans done, renderings prepared and the delivery, as well as landscape plans prepared and delivered for your meeting, your first meeting in April. So we'll deliver those in Danny March. We did actually receive some comments from the Conservation Commission. We received comments from the DPW. We have received comments from Lisa Egleston regarding stormwater and other site attributes that have incorporated changes into the site plan that Mrs. Bradges is going to go through for you today. There were a couple of comments that haven't made it to this plan yet because we literally got them, I think, yesterday. And those were from Mr. Willett and they involve working with the neighbor from Mr. Gill's property that is across the street in this area in its, in regard to connecting the force main for the sewer and using one line instead of having to dig up anything again on North Main, I mean on Turnpike Street. And so we actually are in the process of finalizing that agreement with Mr. DeGrazio, who's the owner. And we'll present that to Mr. Willett so that you will have that for your meeting in April because we are going to seek to continue this, not to your last meeting in March, but to your first meeting in April. And one of the other comments that were issued by DPW is they asked us if we could just merely move down the driveway a little bit more so that it would be across from the entrance point across the street and a little bit more distant from the intersection with Turnpike, which is absolutely able to be accomplished. There's no site constraint that doesn't prohibit us from doing that. The other comment that again is in the address, but will be, is just the manner in which we propose to connect water and again, water and sewer. And again, that's because of the need to have more complimentary plan with the neighbor across the street. And again, we already have had discussions with him and are in the process of doing, making an agreement. At this point, I think I'm going to ask Chris to come up and walk through all of the changes so that at least you know what changes were made for the last site plan.
Do you have Gene Willis's comments for 2302?
I have here 1665 from Gene.
Mr. Chairman, I have a reduced version of 117, it's nicely colored.
Okay, you like shiny color things?
Yeah.
Gorgeous. Thank you.
So as Attorney Man mentioned already, for the record, Chris Bradges, professional civil engineer with offices next door in Middleton, the office of Williamson's and Bradges. We, we received comments from Lisa Egleston and have worked diligently through them and sent back a revised set of plans. And after having met with the plan, with the Conservation Commission as well, we resolved one, one major issue that had to do with the placement of a, of two concrete retaining walls that are intended to separate us elevation wise from the lower elevation on this side of the site, which is near the wetland line, which is shown in this green line here. On our previous plan, we had shown our retaining walls on the downhill side of our proposed infiltration basin, which fell slightly within the Conservation Commission's 50-foot high build. And regarding retaining walls, it's a little bit gray, they're not prohibited, but yet have a good reason. And they have, they had an uneasy feeling about it, so we simply changed the grading scheme such that the retaining walls are now on the uphill side and not within 50 feet of the wetland. And so that's a change that happened on the downhill side of the site. Wonder if Ms. Egleston's initial comments had to do with low impact development techniques and had we considered low impact development techniques as, as part of this project? And at the time we prepared the plan, we discussed various options with Mr. Gill and our directive, if you will, was to try to keep it simple. And that's how we try to approach all of our drainage designs, which helps cut down costs and at the same time meet DAP stormwater management regulations. But the Conservation Commission agent, Jennifer Hughes, had an interesting suggestion in one of our public hearing sessions with the CONCOM. She mentioned that there was a huge landscape strip, if you will, within the right-of-way of Sharpeness Pond Road that really isn't being used and there is no stormwater management to speak of for the pavement along Sharpeness Pond Road. The land, if you will, just slopes back in this direction as a crown on the road. Stormwater flows from one side and to the sideline and from the other side to the side of the road. She said, geez, this would be a perfect place for a rain garden. Would you consider building a rain garden in this area? And we went back as part of our response to Lisa Egleston and incorporated a rain garden feature out in front of the site that you see here. And it's an offsite, it's an offsite improvement because we are going to be collecting and treating some of the stormwater runoff that comes down Sharpeness Pond Road before allowing it to go on. Being a rain garden, it is one of the low impact development techniques that's described in the DAP stormwater management handbook. One other comment related to stormwater management that changed the design slightly was that Lisa pressed, asked us if we would be willing to directly discharge our roof runoff to an underground infiltration basin instead of collecting it together with a parking lot runoff in our infiltration basin, that's an open infiltration basin on this part of the street. And so we went ahead and designed an underground infiltration system that's located underneath the parking lot. And we're able to take advantage of the fact that we are in a fill in the back and so we can sort of build it up to the site as Mr. Gill brings up the site in the rear. And this infiltration area is underground, under the pavement, and it's collecting strictly clean roof runoff from the building. And so that runoff, if you will, has been directed away from this infiltration basin. And so it goes into the ground here with an overflow that bypasses this basin. And that way, one of the, the idea behind it that Lisa had was if you direct this clean runoff directly into the ground, then this infiltration basin is going to do a better job cleaning the runoff from the parking lot because it won't be diluted with, with clean water. And so that was the rationale that Lisa mentioned. We were able to incorporate it in the plan. Other than that, our stormwater management design, again, is, is very simple. We just have a, a deep sump catch basin that collects runoff from the front portion of our site and brings it around the back. And then in the back of our building, in the parking lot in the back, we have a deep sump catch basin here and another catch basin here that collects runoff. It's directed to a sediment trap four bay at this location before traveling into this pre-treatment area before entering the infiltration basin, which is down in this area. We dug a couple of additional test holes because technically we didn't have two test holes in the very bottom of the infiltration area. Our test holes were here and here. And so we came back and dug, dug a couple more holes to meet the letter of the, of the handbook. We were able to prove where that high groundwater elevation is so that the bottom of the infiltration basin can be positioned above the groundwater appropriately. The next part of Lisa's letter dealt with the long-term pollution prevention plan for the project. And we revamped that pollution prevention plan and did, and did a better job of being more site-specific with it. If you look at our accessory building here, this is the proposed accessory storage building that Mr. Gill intends to use to store landscape materials inside. And in our long-term pollution prevention plan, we went into great detail describing the method and the procedure that will, how materials will be delivered to the site, the fact that these, this accessory building is taller than normal, which will allow a dump truck to back in under the roof of the building and then lift its, its rear load and dump it into the, into the building undercover. And, and we go into detail about how one of the employees of the facility has to be there when deliveries are made so that if there is a spill onto the paved portion, that they would simply sweep it or scoop it up back into the building. Similarly, when one of Mr. Gill's smaller vehicles needs material to take to a job site, that small dump truck or pickup truck, if you will, will back up into this area, back up into the building. A little bobcat will come in, scoop up the materials, place it into the back of the dump truck and the vehicles can go on their way to a, to, to a job site. Similarly, we went to great detail about that if there, if there is any material during that process of, of loading the dump trucks and it falls outside of the, undercover of the roof, there's a plan to sweep into a scoop and shovel the material back into the Lisa also mentioned what are, she asked, what are our plans for washing vehicles? Mr. Gill's business is a landscaping business and there was concern about what type of construction equipment, for example, might be washed in the back of the parking area here. And so Mr. Gill does have some heavy equipment. That equipment is stored on job sites and is not, does not come back to this site, would not come back to the site to be washed down, if you will. Any washing of heavy equipment, construction equipment of that nature would happen on the construction site. We had another section in our long-term pollution prevention plan that talked about that. And that the only equipment that Mr. Gill intends to wash here are his over-the-road smaller landscape trucks and that sort of thing. What we've done is we've dedicated a stall in this back storage building. This is a change in the plan. We have designated an indoor washing station. There will be a drain, if you will, inside the building that would collect the washing of any vehicle that Mr. Gill drives into this location and it would be collected into the sewer, into the sewer collection system, the building sewer system, and then, and then continue on that way. The system will have a grate to separate any heavy sediment before moving on to, to a sewer, to the building sewer, if you will. So we've designated that, that one last bay here as a washing station.
So you would be then okay with a prohibition against external washing of vehicles on the site?
Well, we haven't, we haven't talked about that, but Lisa mentioned in her letter that she would recommend against, against that. And so this is, this is sort of the solution.
Okay.
To that question. We don't like to say no forever on things, but if it's a, but we designate, we talked about it as an issue that Lisa brought up and we came up with a solution. And this, this bay, if you will, will have to be heated and that sort of thing is going to be different than remaining storage bins, but we believe that that's going to do a good job of addressing that, that comment.
And the intent was to just bring all the washing of vehicles inside that base of your.
What materials are you going to store?
So we've talked a little bit about this still, are they going to?
Yeah, I mean, it will be a variety of landscape materials. There'll be some stone, there'll be some sand, there'll be some mulch. It could be a variety of things. It could be block, it could be a lot of different.
Sand, stone, mulch, block.
Types of things that people use in, you know, in their front.
But again, it's not, I don't want people to think this is where, you know, you go and you get retail materials. This is not a distribution center. It is simply to be able to support Dan's business. So we won't get materials, you're not going to see materials dropped off on a weekly basis. You know, we might get materials dropped off twice a season. It, it, it's sometimes not even that often because it's just about him being able to deliver for his particular uses because there are many times when he'll buy and it'll just get dropped off directly to that site.
Correct.
Any fertilizers?
Fertilizer, no, right? No.
No. We're not, we're not licensed pesticide, no. We do more landscape construction, sand, stone.
No chemicals?
No, no, no chemicals whatsoever, no.
Would be considered by that?
Oh, I thought you had another question.
Hey, but if there's already like building code prohibitions against that, I don't want to go necessarily, build suspenders.
If there is.
At the TRC, the fire department raised any type of code around storing mulch inside and so that may have to be looked into. Yeah, in order to store various materials, you have to, for example, your point is very well taken with regard to fertilizers. In order to store, store fertilizers, they can be composted, so you, you really have a lot of fire code issues. We, we aren't going to store them anyway, but even with regard to mulch, you actually have to comply with certain fire code standards to have sufficient airflow to ensure safe storage. And we intend to obviously comply with all of that.
Okay, so just going, going through the remaining items, many of them were, were technical in nature regarding how we were calculating certain, certain numbers and things that we needed to clarify for Lisa so that she could understand better how we were meeting the, the stormwater hand, the DAP stormwater handbook. Let's see. We had proposed, for example, that our deep sump catch basins, there are three of them that are, they were to be hooded and deep sump. We hadn't specified the specific brand of hood. Lisa made a couple of recommendations, we chose one of them. So that specific model has now been specified on the drawing. Our proposed element of work consisted of a soap fence line, which is typically good enough for, for a site. Lisa thought that it would be, it would be better to add to that filter sock, which is a mulch-filled sock that, that we can place right along the soap fence. There'll be a combination, combination of that. And then we went into some more detail about, in our operation and maintenance plan, about frequency of cleaning our catch basins and frequency of inspections. That, that's the gist of Lisa's comments and how we addressed them. The layout of the site, parking, building, our, our proposed storm, types of stormwater management areas that, that we focused on, which are infiltration basins. None of that has changed. Their position has changed slightly. Of course, we have our underground infiltration area now. Attorney Man also mentioned a, a letter from DPW regarding moving the entrance. And I think you can see that on the plan. In the letter, they identified a particular contour where the land is flat. And that's this general area. And so if that's where they would like to move the, this entrance to increase this distance from the highway, we'll make sure that we line it up directly across from.
I think it's a combination of both.
Yeah.
And also, I think in their letter, they said that you have to come up with a acceptable order and sort of.
Right, so we, after our TRC meeting, we've gotten some preliminary comments from Tim and Danny and I actually sat down, sat down on the back in December and went through some of those things. Maybe we missed, there was a little bit of miscommunication possibly, they didn't go into detail, but I already have a call into Tim and hopefully.
Okay, good, yeah, I mean, I'm sure you could work it out, so.
So that's, that's where we left off from last time. One other item that I'll touch upon, because we, we talked a little bit about the landscape plan last time, I think it was you, Lemon, asked about the bench. We've removed that bench, if you remember, we showed a bench.
On Turnpike?
Yeah, on the Turnpike side, so that's gone off the landscaping plan.
The driveway is going to be two-way drive?
That's correct. They're, they're designed to be wide enough to accommodate two-way traffic, both of them.
If you needed to in the future, could you use that backside for a, for a driveway?
This one here, if you will? So, so it is a driveway intended to be used primarily for Mr. Gill's operations in the back here so that patterns that are, you know, that will come and, and visit the showroom, if you will, out front here, we'd like for them to be the only ones using this, this entrance here.
Any other questions?
No, not at this point.
Not at this point?
No.
Okay.
Yeah?
So we'll.
Some work to do with Lisa.
A little bit of work to do with Lisa and then we'll come back on the design the next time.
Right, so the request is to continue or tell, is it? Yes, please.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you have, do you have any lighting plan?
Is a lighting plan, okay.
Yes, we did submit.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't touch upon that, but we have a photometric plan that uses LED lighting squares as the, as the top, if you will. And our mission, of course, there is to, is to limit our foot candle value to less than one or close to zero near, near our property lawn. And I think that the lighting plan does a good job of doing that.
I think just more the concern would be anything that, you know, in the sight lines on 114, you know, that they're not distracting. That's a, yeah.
Right, so if I were to draw a line along here to where we have either a zero or .1 value foot candle, actually it's this contour right here. This is a .1 foot candle value. So beyond that, it's almost zero before you get to the right-of-way line of 114. We were most conscious of this side. We wanted to try to keep this vegetated buffer in place if there's a resident on the property.
You're not putting any, just putting pole lights, you're not doing any ballards lights or anything like that, any lower sign lighting or?
So.
So, I'm sorry.
So as far as actual site lighting, so Chris has shown everything with regard to what will provide essentially daylight conditions of the property safe. We will have decorative landscaping and that may have some ballards, like, you know, when we, for example, in the front where we have the walkway.
That's, yeah, well, exactly. That's what I was thinking, I was like, if you're like, you're doing a landscape architect, you'd probably want to do something.
Yeah. Just thinking about.
I think you're going to be very, very, very pleased when you see.
There will, there will actually be a lot of accent lighting to, to uplight specific trees and such. Landscaping, very subtle, all low voltage, just landscape fixtures. Again, all, all accent lighting won't have any impact on any sort of traffic, you know, losing sight, if anything, it's just going to accent the property a lot.
Right, it'll be low, there'll be alarm that walkway, you'll see some lighting.
Very subtle.
Yeah. And that'll all be on the plan that we're going to deliver to you for the architectural renderings.
Right, good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you.
1665 Ray Pond Road. This project was actually, the public hearing was open January 5th and it was continued until tonight without any evidence being heard yet. So it is really the first time you hear the scope of the project. This lot was created in 1966 by an A&R plan. So it, it does predate the conservation zone that was established in 1994. The proposal is to raise the existing structure. Does everyone remember where this is? Do you need a look at this?
Yeah, it's right by Ray's Pond.
Right, right across from the lake, near Ray's Pond, yes?
I don't know where this is, sorry.
Okay, that's fine, have a look. So you know where Ray's Pond is or where the fishing area is on the big bend of Ray Pond Road? So it's directly?
Not where the dump truck went through?
Yes, exactly, yeah. So adjacent to that, when you're looking at the lot to the right, that was permitted through a watershed special permit, I think a couple of years ago now. It has not been constructed yet. So this is a lot with an existing house. The house has been somewhat demolished down to plywood. At one time, they envisioned reconstructing on the foundation. They've decided to raise the structure and completely rebuild. Therefore, they've been to the zoning board of appeals in the interim of opening the hearing till now. They received a variance for construction within, of a new structure within the non-disturbant zone. That variance contained one condition, and that was that the dwelling that is, that is constructed must stay within the boundaries shown on the plan that they approved. And essentially, that plan is identical in terms of the location of the structure to what you'll see tonight. So I will bring up that plan. Bill McLeod is here, representing the applicant, and Brian Vaughn, I think you represented for the ZVA here, if there were any questions on that.
This is the building that's?
It's the existing structure. It was the L. Hafner residence years ago. It's, it's boarded over now.
Okay, that's.
Yes.
And it's got a, a gate, a metal gate.
Exactly, yeah.
Actually, we had to look at that earlier at one time. Actually, we had to look at that earlier at one time. I think both of you and I, at different times.
They didn't intend to be forced, meaning that they could...
Rebuild it without a watershed special permit, so...
So the demo permit, the building department was allowed, and so it was brought down demoed. Some landscaping was removed, some outbuilding was removed. And at that point, when they came for a discussion item, asking for a waiver of a watershed special permit, you denied that request for a waiver and said that they need to file. So now, at this point, they're going to file for that.
Okay, so there seems to be, well, let's let the applicant make the presentation, and let's address then the issues that, at least, there's some letters and so forth. So it's all yours, Bill.
Thank you. Bill McLeod from Andola Consultants. And the plan that we gave you shows the existing conditions in the proposed house. Part of the process of tearing down the house and building a new one was to make sure that the new house complied with all the setback requirements. Where before, we had non-conforming setbacks from one lot line, the new house will conform to all of the zoning setbacks. Virtually the entire lot is within the 325-foot non-discharge zone from the lake. All of the work is going to take place within the 250-foot no disturbance zone, and the 100-foot buffer zone from the lake falls approximately in this location right here. What we've done is, we've designed the site so that we're not going to have to go to conservation. And we're doing that by utilizing the existing sewer service and water service as it comes off of Grape Pond Road and connecting it back outside the buffer zone. And we're also leaving intact, because it's in relatively good shape, the driveway from Grape Pond Road to approximately in this location. The rest of the site is basically going to be cleaned up, the existing house demolished, and the driveway location, even next to the house, will be used. Other than this section here, all of the pavement will be removed, and new pavement will be put in place. And we're going to regrade that to address a request that Lisa had for us, that we should just change the grading of the driveway so that the runoff from this driveway goes on to the lawn area, and that helps in infiltration and filtration for runoff from that portion of the driveway. Bill, did you say that you're going to change so that the house is no longer close to the lake, too close to that line? Correct. So we'll be making the house footprint smaller? Actually, thank you for asking that. There's going to be a reduction in impervious cover by a little over 1,200 square feet. There's a large patio on the side, and the footprint of the house is about the same. So we're reducing the patio area, we're reducing a substantial amount of pavement area here, and I think from a house footprint size, it's approximately the same. Will you have to excavate the existing? All the old foundation comes out, gets hauled off-site, and the cellar floor is basically going to be about the same elevation. And what happens is that, because the backyard is about six and a half feet higher than the front yard, and we've got some retaining walls in the front to help with regrading. There were retaining walls in the front of this house before, and walks, and those have already been removed. So topographically, the house is kind of fitting into the hill the same as the other house was. This house has a garage under on the side. The new house will have a garage under on the side. The elevation of this driveway is going to be just about the same, other than just some whopping of the driveway, so that drainage goes on to the grass lawn area. The whole lot sheets towards the lake. We will be adding a rooftop infiltration system where the current dwelling doesn't have one. So we've accommodated all of, we've really addressed all of Lisa's concerns. She gave us her initial review, and we responded. She came back with just a couple of other issues, and one of those last issues was the changing of the driveway. So I believe we've responded to all of her concerns.
I believe so. I think, in general, the roof, 100% of the roof is going to make it to the infiltration trench, right? The drain has been added to capture it, 100%. And the rate of capture is the half-inch storm, is my understanding.
And actually, I grabbed the Mass Stormwater Handbook. And what the, as far as the, how much we're putting in, the Mass Stormwater Handbook says that at a minimum, the annual recharge from post-development site shall approximate the annual recharge from pre-development conditions based on soil types. We have a soil type C on this site, which is not a very pervious soil. Soil type A is, like, very coarse and gravel. D is impervious clay. We're a C soil type. And for a C soil type, it requires .25 inches of rain. So quarter of an inch of rain over the impervious area should be recharged. We're doing a half-inch, so we're doubling the required amount under the stormwater handbook requirements.
And the overflow from that?
And basically, the overflow is that wherever the downspouts enter the perimeter collection drain around the house, they have an overflow. It's a standard overflow pipe.
So the overflow is also to the permanent slot area?
Then the overflow of that goes on to the lawn area. It's not going on to, as she recommended, it'll go on to pervious areas, which it So we have a house that's fallen into disrepair. We're just trying to replace it in generally the same location. We're keeping the same driveway. We're leaving this driveway intact purposely so that we don't have to go to the Conservation Commission.
Sounds like you're going to have to, though.
Yeah. Wouldn't you want to slope that driveway?
Gene Willis is owner of the new permit.
Well, I don't agree with Gene, and I'll try to square that away, because I did download...
So Gene was on vacation last week, so, and so best, he probably received that today, correct? Just this morning, so he probably had any conversation with Gene.
I meant any conversation with Gene, but I would like to address that.
I think, well, you need to, but...
Okay. Because I don't believe Gene is correct. This is the driveway policy and procedures that we did download from the website. It says that no person shall make any excavation or other substantial change in a town way open to public travel without first obtaining a driveway permit from the director of public works or his designee. And we are not going to do any work in the town way. We are absolutely, now, he mentions in his memo, he says here that it is likely that the portion of the existing driveway to remain will be overlaid. I'm telling you right now, it is not going to be overlaid. It's not part of our plan.
So probably is a fancy word for being reconstructed.
No, we're just leaving it as is. It's fine. It serves its purpose. If the subsequent owner of this house wants to overlay that driveway, he'll go through whatever permit procedures he has to go through. But there's no requirement that it be overlaid. We're not proposing that it be overlaid, and we're not doing any work in the public. That's the only time that you need a driveway permit, is if you're doing work in the public way. Now, one may assume that if we were going to overlay it, and maybe, maybe I need to explain to Gene that we're leaving that driveway, we're not overlaying it, that he would correct his memo, but I...
I think he understood that was what was presented. I think he believes that it will. He's situating that it will, he believes it will be, and therefore, he's going to make the requirement for the building permit to not sheet flow to Grape Pond Road.
Do you believe that the driveway is sturdy enough to handle, I assume you're going to have cement trucks going up it? Yeah. And it's sturdy enough? Yes. And you've done testing to see what type? No, you generally don't do testing on a driveway. Okay, what happens if the cement trucks eat up the driveway? If they do, one, there's no requirement to have a paved driveway, but we have a sufficient enough driveway to serve a dwelling. And that's what our permit is for here. We really are staying away from doing work in the town road, purposely stayed out of the town road, and purposely stayed outside the buffer zone of the Conservation Commission.
How long is the driveway?
How long is it?
Yeah.
From the road to the house?
Yeah.
It is about 110 feet, 115 feet.
And how wide is it?
It is about 13 feet wide.
Are you going to build meet the fire code? Because you're going to have to redo the shoulder of it to support fire trucks that's over 50 feet.
Or you can put a sprinkler over the house.
Oh, you can put sprinklers.
So you're going to do sprinklers in the house? Don't know yet. I won't comment on the construction of the house. Because there are some, there are some concerns as to whether that regulation is enforceable, but I don't want to get into that now. We're here for a watershed special permit. Bill, it just seems to me, I would worry if you suddenly found out the sewage system was not enough, what the solution would be. It's just, it's something in the back. Well, you know, it's a sewer service to the street, and that sewer service is certainly not as old as the sewer line in Grape Pond Road, which is about 20 years old. But the things that you would normally do, a property like this, which usually gets a pretty high price, you know, related to the square footage, you know, you seem to be saying, well, we don't need it. Right now, we're not proposing work in that area. And if work is needed, then they have to get the permit for whatever work they propose.
They'd have to go back to us, too, as well as Conservation Commission. So I mean...
They're rolling the dice.
Yeah.
Because it'll take three times longer to kind of do modifications than everyone. But, okay, question on how far, how much closer to the lake are we moving the house? Because I don't know why we're moving it closer, our whole, towards the lake.
The, how much closer to the lake?
Yeah.
It's about 13 feet.
13 feet, yeah.
And that was the, we ended up making the house now conforming to the setback requirement.
Was that the request of something?
No, we just, if, we knew that if we were building a new house, that we should, if we're taking down a old house, we should make the new house conform to zoning. And the impervious cover is this, is less.
True, but we're also moving it, you know, our whole thing is with the lake, is trying to get things farther away from the lake, not move it closer, so that's why.
And it fits with the topography of the lot. So if we go back further, we're just pushing it...
Well, no, not further, but to the existing location, you know, not moving it closer.
So tell us again how you're going to whip away all the water so it doesn't sort of have any adverse impact on the lake?
Right now, we have no rooftop infiltration. And right now, all of this driveway pitches down to the street, which is, the lake is right across the street. So we then walked this driveway so that the runoff for this new section of the driveway gets directed to the lawn area instead of going straight down the driveway. So the contour lines are now tipped so that the runoff is going in this direction instead of...
And then you're doing that by grading.
By grading.
Yeah.
Of that section. Then the roof area is going to a new infiltration system behind the house. So we pick it up with gutters along the front and gutters along the back, and they connect to this rooftop infiltration system. And the changing of the grade of the driveway was what Lisa had suggested to us, so we did that to accommodate her request.
And so you can change that part of the driveway to grade up there without touching the bottom part?
Yes. And we can do that because we've got, we're going to be regrading in here, so we've got that flexibility here. The road grade is a road grade. There's nothing we can do about that. And this grade, this grade up here is relatively flat, where this grade is steeper. And you can see that if you want to... But you'll still have a lot of water running out onto Grape Pond Road. We're going to have less going onto Grape Pond Road than before. Could you do anything down at the base of the driveway to direct the flow out onto the lawn area? I, no, because this lawn area is substantially higher than the road, so I can't get it to flow uphill. I'd be a mountain... Okay, so there's nothing, yeah, but isn't, at the level of the road, isn't it much closer to... Down at the road, there, there already is like a ditch at the side of the road. Yeah, there is. But I, do you direct any water into that ditch? No, we're not, we're not changing any of the drainage characteristics down here, we're not doing any work.
On purpose, and should be said in the beginning. Today, it's Grape Pond Road, and it will, but the upper piece, being reconstructed, that upper piece exists today, is going to be directed to the pervious area.
So how, in terms of the engineering review, how is the back and forth going, and how many items are open?
As far as Lisa's, I think that response is complete. Like I said, I think she prefer a one-inch storm. Can we mandate it? I don't think so. But they have redirected the driveway and the roof runoff, 100% of it going to this trench have both been accommodated, and those were the major comments by Lisa. Gene Willis, I think we will have to have a response, and they'll have to discuss that.
Now, what about Jennifer's note?
So Jennifer's note is somewhat technical. So in the response to Lisa Edgerton, there was a comment made that Jennifer has verified the bordering vegetated wetland to the lake, as well as Raise Pond. The lake, if you can read the gray here in here, it has not been delineated for the bordering wetland there. The edge of water has been identified as the annual high watermark of the lake. I have confirmed with Bruce Thibodeau, the director of DPW, that that is, in fact, at 114 elevation there, is what they maintain the lake at. So that is, in effect, the annual high watermark. The bordering vegetated wetland on the adjacent lot that we looked at earlier that was in a couple of years ago, they had been delineated on that lot, and she had verified that. So that wetland wasn't delineated on this plan. It runs pretty similar with the one in the adjacent lot, and in the end, it's probably not going to change this 100-foot line that much.
Okay, so it really is very arcane and technical.
It is somewhat technical. And the other comment was this line, I'm not sure if it's on yours, Bill, if I can see that.
Yes, it's right here.
So the delineation from Raise Pond had to be delineated as well. The, I remember right, the non-disturbance zone is only 100 feet from Raise Pond, which doesn't even reach this lot, but there's a 325 non-discharge zone that hadn't been on. So it's now this kind of just arched line. It encompasses the whole house from Raise Pond, so it's within the non-discharge zone from Raise Pond and within the non-disturbance from the lake. Her comment was, if you were to look at the delineation on the abutting property, it was much more of a jagged line, where this appears to be an approximate line. We wanted it on the plan for the record, so I could...
If I could just touch bases on that. We didn't put this line on from Raise Pond because the whole lot's in the non-disturbance zone anyhow because of the lake. However, this line here, and I, I'll just have to square this here, this line is 325 feet from the DPW outside Raise Pond that the Conservation Commission already reviewed and issued or not our conditions on. And I think if I sat down with her and literally did a cut and paste where I taped the site plan we got approved next door onto this, I can just show Jennifer that that line is accurate. I can't say much more than that. It's an accurate line.
I'm confused, though, why we're not doing a one-inch storm.
Every project has a one-inch storm. Why all suddenly is it half-inch when we have in our watershed that it's best management practices?
I guess, yeah, my thing is that this is possibly as close to the lake as we've ever done something. I was going to ask if our consultant were putting in all reasonable best practices and 1-inch... Seems to be a reasonable best... And I... So, yeah.
She's indicated that the EPA is coming out with new regulations, which will require 1-inch mitigation. But I don't believe they're there today. I believe it's been our stated to request that. I think we've had that.
But we're... Yeah. We're... I mean, this is less than 200 feet away from the lake. I mean, this is...
All construction in the watershed protection district shall comply with best management practices. It doesn't say EPA requirements. It doesn't say, you know, standards. Best management practices is what we consider best management practice for erosion, filtration, stormwater control, which has always been 1-inch. We've never had someone in Lake do not 1-inch.
Well, if it was meant to be 1-inch, the regulation's the same 1-inch, and...
No, we actually put best management practices so we can up it as best management practices change. So we don't have to rewrite our bylaw and go to town meeting every time.
Best management practices, to me, is the BMPs, the state's stormwater management. And this... The Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook says for this soil type, and it depends on soil types. If you had a coarse soil...
Well, wait a second, Bill. First of all, that's the handbook, but I doubt that's the handbook for projects within 125 feet of a water supply. I mean, sorry, go on. What's the big problem?
There isn't a big problem. I want to be on the record that we complied with the regulations.
Fair enough.
Now, if you want 1-inch, it's very simple. I just double the size of the infiltration system.
Yeah.
And if that's what you want, that's what you do. However, I want everybody to know that we complied with the regulations. We didn't just comply with them, we did it double the requirement.
Fair enough.
And I believe Lisa's conceded that, and she's expressed her concern with it, that others have accommodated the 1-inch.
But if it's the desire of the planning board that we do it 1-inch, we'll just...
Well, we would appreciate if you did that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Voluntarily. Yes. Anything else?
After some gentle persuasion.
Gentle persuasion. Anybody else we need to address?
That... I will say that was a significant concern.
So we leave this open because there's open issues, but can we... When will we be ready to vote?
I think at the next meeting. If we work through with Jean.
I don't know when Jean gets back from his vacation.
He's back now. That's why I couldn't come today.
So I'll contact Jean tomorrow to set up a meeting as soon as possible. I'll sit down with Jennifer.
I have the other plan, if you'd like to see it, if you want to get into it. If not, if you want to be...
I mean, the planning store?
The 1665 that had that line.
I actually have a full-size copy of the copy.
If you want to show it. I mean, it does have a jag to it that it doesn't... It's not as exaggerated here, but it may not be that far up. And John, as far as... I think I can draft a decision at this point, assuming that would be resolved. So I think we could vote if this...
Okay.
So this is the lot next door. And this was... This was the BVW line that the Conservation Commission reviewed and accepted. They gave... They issued an order of conditions for this lot. And yes, this lot's jagged, but as you draw your setback lines, they become curved lines. The reason why is that you don't draw them as a straight line, because then what would happen is the distance, like from this wetland flag, if you drew it a line parallel to that and parallel to that, then that distance would be greater than like on this 100 feet.
So we're getting the geometry lesson here, right?
That's my best subject. That's why I'm a land surveyor. But... And the further you get away, the smoother it becomes. So I could literally make a print of this, cut it on the proper line, tape it together, and sit down with her and with a scale, show her that every point on that line is 325. But it's a moot point because the entire lot, no matter which way you go, is in the 325 zone.
I agree. It's just helpful to have it on record in the event the next authority wants to do something just like we wanted to use.
Okay, sure. But I'll show her that that line is correct.
Fair enough. Good. Great. Excellent. Thank you.
So if you could provide that in writing to a response letter to her and to Jean, and that way I can comment.
But I want to meet with her first, and I want to meet with Jean, and we'll increase the settlement.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
For now? I think we're fine. If we think of anything, we'll let you know before the next meeting.
Is this submitted tonight?
Yeah, just... And I just continue to work with you on this.
Okay. We'll square it by the next meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So that plan has to go in the record now, too?
What else do we have, Jean?
Okay. We have meeting minutes from February 16th. If we want to move that ahead of the executive session, we could then go into executive session to review meeting minutes and not refer into a public session.
And I probably do that, yeah. So this is...
Do you have our little thing to read?
I gave that to Lynn. If you'd like to do that.
No, I'll pass it. No, no, I'm good. I was thinking...
She was here first.
Say that, while we do this reading after the...
Hey, before we go, I have to, you know, I should do it so everybody, our TV audience, knows. At 10 o'clock tonight, one of my daughters is going to be on TV on Comedy Central, Broad City. It's one of their new shows, and she was in one of the episodes, so...
Is she a comedian?
She... Of sorts, yes, as a matter of fact, yeah.
I hope so.
So 10 o'clock tonight.
What's your...
Comedy Central. Yeah. It's a... It's very... It's a very New York kind of show, is the only way to describe it. So it's about two female slackers, you know, so...
And your daughter's one of these slackers?
Yeah. What's that?
And your daughter's one of the slackers?
No, she's not one of the slackers. She knows one of them, so, yeah.
What's the show called?
Broad City. Yeah.
Is she a regular on the show?
No, she's on like once each year, once or twice each year. So she'd like to be a regular, you know?
Thank you, everybody.
There you go. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Meeting minutes, line 103. Especially where Peter's not here. Peter agreed to work on some content for the website on the watershed. I just agreed that the website needed work.
Okay.
Making sure we get that in the minutes since he's not here. But he did agree to work on it, the content. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for February 16th, 2016, as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now we do a roll call, right? Somebody makes a motion to go into executive session for which we will not... We'll just exit the meeting out of there. So go ahead.
I will... The board go into executive session for confidential communications to discuss executive